Good morning. It's Tuesday, May 28, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right. And we've got minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the May 21 Commissioners Meeting and the annexation hearing.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. And do we have any public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions? Seeing that, we'll move and move forward. Now, I hear from the County Engineers Office, Dan Becker. Good morning.
Morning. Hope everyone had a great weekend.
Oh, yeah.
It was awesome. All right, let's see. I've got four resolutions for your consideration today. The first is a necessity to close a portion of Ridgewood Road for a culvert replacement. The next is a necessity to close River Corners Road between Spencer Mills and Smith Road. The third is approving the final plat for the Cobblestone Park subdivision, Phase Four, in Montville Township. And the fourth is approving the annual assessments for that same subdivision in Montville Township.
Move to approve the four resolutions?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Dan. Denise Testor, Planning Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have one resolution authorizing the submission of an application for funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program for PY-24.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Just go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to mention the process of doing this. That was my first time, obviously, participating in that. Or, well, it was, I guess it was a little bit different this year than it was because this is a two-year cycle, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, the, it was a good learning experience for me. And I think we made some discussions, and it was in the minutes of that meeting, too, about making sure the communities are looking for bigger impact projects because we do have a finite number of grants, which is a little bit disappointing. But, but all the programs, I think, that we're funding are good improvement projects and things that are on profile for the program. So, I was excited about that.
Right, and the top three, too, are long-term impacts kind of projects, which is what the grant kind of focuses on.
Correct.
Yeah, I think it is, reflecting in the comments, too, is the trouble that we do have some smaller projects that were given to us, but they're such a small dollar amount. And then, since we only are led by the number of, number of projects that we can award, it makes it more difficult to fund those. So, in effect, we do have some really good, I mean, between the city of Brunswick, whether they're street improvements, the Better Women Shelters, Village of Lodi, and, of course, those that City of Wadsworth is eligible for or actually required funding for that, given the grant, and, of course, our county functions. This, I think, does meet a lot of needs, does distribute the benefit countywide to a number of the communities. And hopefully, next, as we next, when we go to the next round, we can kind of educate and bring some people together and be able to work, continue to work with the state to help us refine the process a little bit better, make it easier to meet everybody's needs.
Right, and I'd love to see some communities that, you know, rarely apply, you know, apply for
Yeah.
an opportunity because we do have a list of them that have not had the opportunity for this.
Yeah. And Denise did a really good job going out there, impeding the bushes. Last time, we didn't. We actually had fewer applications and money. But this is, this time, we had the reverse.
Right.
Well, and then the other thing, I guess, I would add, too, is when we have a opportunity to apply funds like this that has a finite universe, there were some, you know, kind of in-house, within the county projects, County Home and some others that we were, we decided against funding. If even, if there were some way that we could incorporate some of those and then use other county dollars on smaller projects, kind of some outside-the-box thinking that we make more impact or make the dollars go farther, if it's capital improvement money we had set aside that we could use elsewhere. I know that's a little bit tricky. But, but if all we're getting, or if the feedback we're getting is that these are the only projects we have and they're not going to be big enough to make an impact, then maybe we could consider some outside-the-box ways to bring some of those in the fold into the future. And I'm pleased with how we did it this year, but just kind of thinking about other ways we can make those dollars go further.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think this will become even more important as the communities have, you know, we have the COVID or the ARPA dollars and so forth. And as that is diminished as a source for local funding, as well as for the county, it'll be even more important next round, I think, to come up with that plan.
I'm glad you're able to use all of the funds, 100% of the funds and state dollars. That's great.
Okay, thank you.
So, have been moved and second?
Yep.
A roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Holly Mirren, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have one new hire at County Home, three rate increases, two in sanitary and one in maintenance, two promotions, one in sanitary and one at dog shelter, two leave of absence, one in maintenance, one at County Home, one suspension in transit, one transfer between agencies for maintenance, one retirement at Job and Family Services, and one separation at sanitary. And the second resolution is amending the Employee Assistance Program Agreement with all one health.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I was just going to say that Matt and Chris did a lot of work, and Holly, on the health, health presentations that you looked at before you made your decision, so thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have six resolutions for your consideration today, the first two of which are a new format for us specifically for grant amendments. We are in the season where everybody is amending things right near the end of their grant life to be able to maximize the use of their grants. The first one is somewhat of that line. It's the Adult Probation TCAP Fund. This is more a notice for you guys because they receive their money over the period of eight quarters. And they are looking to increase their appropriations currently in excess of what they receive. They'll get it back on, in future payments in the grant year for 2025. So, we're increasing that by 100,000. Our second resolution is an adjustment for the Felony Delinquent Care and Reclaim Grant for juvenile probate. Our third resolution is a procurement card for the Sheriff's 4D Program. Officer Easterday has been having some trouble with the way that the old cards were issued when he would be traveling for that. Our fourth resolution is the purchase of 6,300 gallons of gasoline for the Engineering Center. As usual, Port's Petroleum has come in as our low bid at $254 per gallon. Our fifth resolution is expenses of county officials. Nothing out of state this time. And our sixth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,180,675.93.
Move to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Chris Jacob, County Administrator. Good morning.
Four resolutions for you this morning. The first, as a follow-up to previous conversations with the board, would allow employees to serve as precinct election officials pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 3501.28F. This would ostensibly allow for county employees under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners to receive their regular pay for working for the county while they simultaneously were working as poll workers based on the selection process of the Board of Elections. This would also, there's been a change in the language of the resolution from previous years. This would allow for out-of-county residents who are also employed by Medina County to serve at their local precincts under other county boards of election outside of Medina County. Next resolution authorizes final donations and disposal of unneeded and obsolete personal property currently located within the Medina County Courthouse complex. Seems this is about the fourth or fifth resolution we've done. This should be the final one and would allow for the ultimate disposition of property to townships, villages, and other nonprofit organizations and internal departments if there's any desire to obtain any of these items. Next resolution approves an agreement for employee health benefit plan consulting services. This is a negotiated agreement with the Fideli Group. This is for a 24-month period beginning June 1 of this year through May 31 of 2026. The annual amount is based on a per-employee, per-month cost of $6 through the end of this calendar year, and then that increases to $7 per month, per employee, through the end of the contract term. And the fourth and final resolution this morning accepts an amended lease agreement renewal with Summit Medina County Workforce Area Council of Governments. This is for lease space that you provide to that organization at the building located at 72 Public Square. There's a reduction in square footage, which approximately equals 750 square feet. There's a corresponding decrease in the rental payment that would therefore be due from this organization. The organization seems satisfied with the reduction in space. And I believe they're meeting, their board is meeting
June 21st.
June 21st to approve the document itself. That's all I have.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
That's the Sam Wha Cog that will be.
Right.
Yes.
Yep. Any discussion? I did want to make comments regarding the employees, allowing employees to serve as precinct election officials. This has been done in the prior general elections by the board. It's been slightly modified, as you indicated. As I understand it, too, this only applies to non-bargaining unit employees.
Right.
So, just to be clear of the condition of, and also subject to approval of the supervisor.
Yep.
And also allows other elected officials to piggyback on the same policy to allow their staff members to participate also, if they so desire.
Yeah, I'm glad we're doing that. I'm glad we're finding a way to accommodate that without, while keeping the county offices open. Obviously, there was no discussion of not keeping the county offices open. But I think that's a good way to, if there's, if there's the opportunity for people to, to, if the offices can maintain their function and then make other folks available, that's a great, a great solution to have for election operations.
Right, especially since the Board of Elections does have those minimum requirements out at the polling places, so. And it's the temporary part-time employees are tough to fill.
Yep.
Yeah, they seem to be getting longer. And obviously, their requirements are much more complicated and training and so forth, so.
Well, it's demanding for a group of volunteers that gets older every year if they have the same people back. So, maybe that'll get some
It's a long day.
It is.
Some new faces involved.
I just want to thank employees that are willing to be able to do that out of their normal work schedule. Okay, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Our department updates. Shannon, you also have some resolutions for us here, too.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two resolutions for your consideration this morning, improving the submission of an application with the FTA for our FY-24 urban area formulation grants. This was an effort with the FTA to essentially program our remaining FTA funds that came in. We would not, we were not part of the allocation for the next year. So, this, we didn't receive funds for '24. These are '21, '22, '23, and '24 funds that are getting, I'm sorry, '21, '22, and '23 funds that are getting cleaned up and being programmed for three purposes. For operating, of course, preventative maintenance, and for replacement vehicles. The second resolution is for the approval of Medina County Public Transit Participation Agreement with Masabi LLC as a member of NEARIDE to support the Easy Fair mobile ticketing system. This is a continuation, just a renewal of the contract with them. All things have gone well with the validators. We saw upwards of 18% per month at a high level of participation. It does help some of our clients that appreciate the no cash system.
Oh, yeah.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? I'll just mention the, to make it clear to the public, this is, this urban area formula grant program that we were qualified for when we were changed from a classification of urban transit to now a rural transit. We're no longer qualified for future funding in that. So, we, this is basically using up what money we were qualified for. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
And in other words, from then on, now we just have to basically look to the state of Ohio and their rural transit program for the same amount of funding as possible.
Absolutely. We're going to move from Section 5307 for operating to 5311, which is a different qualifying formula. But I've been assured by the state, a lot of discussions, reassurance, that, you know, there'll be no gaps in. We're planning well. I think we're, the transition will be a little different than they're used to because we're, nobody really goes back the other way. There was another county that did the same thing as us.
Right, yeah.
So, thank you.
Yep, all right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, very good. And you have a report for us.
So, our month of April was good. Obviously, we, we saw some fluctuations in ridership. Medina seems to be very strong. Wadsworth was a little different. I, I saw some downtick there, and I just would imagine it's just a bump. But Brunswick remains, is just doing well. We're taking a lot more people in Brunswick than we were pre, from April of '23. Ridership is up a little bit overall. I'm happy to say that miles are down, fuel down. With the cost of fuel, we're really making, leveraging that. It's important that we, you know, track those metrics to be able to communicate to the community the why and the success of the system. More folks are saying they're getting there quicker. It is trying to control those costs that are ever rising with, with fuel and labor and things like that. So, passengers per mile, I'm seeing a lot, a lot of improvement. Office full of adults continue to be our highest for our agency contracts, 1,473 trips in the month of April. Just very strong numbers when it comes to our seniors. I really am happy to say that all three flexes are in place. I said this to a group at Family First recently, that we continue to learn every month about what each community needs. And Brunswick is different than Medina. And Medina is different than Wadsworth. So, the team works very hard. I thank them every month. I thank them publicly. They really do a lot to communicate with the community about what they need and how we continue to have the number that I look at every month at the end of the month, six trip denials as opposed to the hundreds we had before, hundred, almost 100 we had before. So, we're getting people where they need to go. I think it's a, we're leveraging that technology to make sure that we can be as efficient as possible. And those unnecessary non-revenue miles that we were fighting for so long, we're not doing that. So, I like the fact that, I think it's a lot of education. And I just say that humbly to a lot of folks. Let's talk about what you need and how this meets your need. And I think when I'm talking to them, they, they understand over a little bit of explanation.
When we have miles, when you have your miles covered in your metrics, if there are multiple people in there, do those miles get double count? I mean, I'm not, you know, do they get counted again? Or is a mile a mile whether there's one rider or five riders?
The FTA tracks it as unlinked passenger trips. So, to answer your question, there is an unlinked passenger trip formula that says this passenger traveled this many miles. And the benefit from us doing this electronically, we can see each individual miles because we're tracking that GPS of that vehicle. So, we do know. But this is total miles of the vehicle that people are traveling. But, you know, I said this recently, too. Our flex routes, you're averaging three-quarter to a mile to a mile for your trip. But our county trips are getting longer. There's many, many people. Those trips denied earlier, those were the ones from Spencer to Brunswick.
Right.
We're doing those now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, for those that don't have it in front of them, last April of '23 was 39 denials. Now, you're down to six.
Yeah.
And that's been the trend since we've had the flex.
That's correct.
And you had that capacity to be able to provide the riders that service.
Right, that
Yeah, as well as working with the
Exactly. And, and the most efficient way to do it isn't always the most timely. And I say this to my team. There'll be a group that wants to go one way, and they're only 45 minutes off. We love to group them together. And that's the extra, the extra layer of efficiency that we can get by grouping those people even more together. So, there's, instead of two or three, it's six or seven riding together. And that's what we're really hope to get to. That's always not an agreement.
Right. Well, and that's, and that's what I was getting at with my question, too, because it's, well, in Medina County, it's never going to be mass transit as we see it in more urbanized areas. I mean, we're not going to have 50 people in a bus, I don't imagine.
I understand.
But, but if we have six people on a path as opposed to one person, that's great to me. And that, that means that the process is working because that's even more efficient. Not having vacant miles driven is the first goal. But then, from there, making it be from a trip for one person from Spencer to Brunswick for maybe a half dozen people that have to make that trip, and they make it at the same
Shared ride service is a definite goal.
Yeah.
And passengers per mile is the metric that we measure it on.
Yeah, perfect.
And, and the big metric being total ridership is up.
Yeah.
Is the percentage, I know that we've seen that shift, more of an increased percentage of those going for the purpose of employment. And is that still pretty much about
Medina, Medina.
Medina area?
It seems to be Medina's driving that.
Okay, it's like, it was like about 30% or something like that, or?
AI route, Plastapack.
Yeah.
A lot of those are, we're getting those employees. Measurable, measurable increase in service is very much needed. We need to temper our, but yeah, I think there's, that's the driving force for workforce development, Medina.
Which is what the flex actually added to us. Because when we had a fixed route, you're not able to hit the employment centers. Now, we can.
Now, you can.
And it's, now we can. And I just, this is just immense improvements. And glad the technology is there to enable that.
And that's the last thing I'll mention. We're, we've rolled a few of our new buses out. The technology's getting finalized in the next week. We've had to wait, been in a little bit of a queue to get the technology onboard, the modems. Maintenance has done all the, everything they can do as far as inspecting the vehicle. We've, you know, we're ready to go with the technology, getting on the vehicles. And we rolled a lot of those buses out of the way that needed a lot of work, which is going to help us on the maintenance side of budgeting. And maintenance, trying to make sure they can keep that vehicle afloat, so to speak.
Good.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Good job. Debbie Kiley, Job and Family Services. A couple of, more than a couple resolutions here.
I know. I'm like Chris and Brett. There are seven for your consideration this morning. The first is approving the Title 20 Plan for Job and Family Services. The second is authorizing the County Auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services 4E Fund to the Public Assistance Fund. The next is authorizing the County Auditor to transfer funds from the JFS Children's Services SCPA Fund to the JFS Public Assistance Fund. The next is authorizing an agreement for our CCMEP TANF Summer Youth Program with Job and Family Services and Tri-County Jobs for Ohio graduates. The next is a resolution extending MOU between Job and Family Services and Catholic Charities, DICE, of Cleveland. And the next is authorizing an updated gift card and voucher policy for the agency. And lastly, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Medina County Showbiz Company for our Child Support Division.
Move to approve seven resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
And division updates.
All right.
Public Assistance, so this summer, the Department of Education has continued to authorize a food assistance program for those individuals that are low-income families with school-aged children. It was started way back when COVID had happened. There was a school lunch program that continued during the summer, and the Department of Education has continued that. So, families that are currently eligible and enrolled in the SNAP program will automatically receive $120 per child on their current benefit card. They don't have to apply. They don't have to do anything. They'll automatically get it. For those families that haven't yet enrolled or applied for SNAP benefits but do so during the summer months, they, too, will automatically be enrolled, excuse me, if they have school-aged children. And that will show up about two months after they're considered eligible by the agency. For those families that haven't applied for SNAP benefits and don't apply for SNAP benefits but have children that are on the reduced free school lunch programs, they're automatically enrolled, too. So, the Department of Education is working with the State Job and Family Services Offices to identify who those people are so that the families aren't burdened with an application and, and more red tape. So, they'll automatically receive a benefit card for those children. So, unlike those that are receiving SNAP benefits and the benefit arrives on that card, those who aren't in receipt of SNAP benefits will get their own card for every child in the home that's eligible. The, the only caveat with this is that after those benefits are authorized, they expire 122 days after they're authorized. So, the idea is, is that while your children aren't in school and getting those free or reduced-priced lunches that you're feeding them during the summer months before they return. If anyone that wants to apply, maybe they're not on the school, the reduced lunch program, they need to apply with the Department of Education. It's not through Job and Family Services. I've shared that website with Brian, so it will appear in the next Commissioners Newsletter. And Sarah, if you can get with me, I'll share the website with you, too. Thank you.
All right.
For Child Support, a new software system is coming for the creation, enforcement, and management of all child support. It's supposed to be effective in July of this year. It's long been in the works. It's actually been postponed several times. But we're feeling pretty confident that it's going to go through in July. pretty confident that it's going to go through in July. It's actually going to be an online, web-based application, because right now, it's almost...
Have they tested it other sites?
Yes, they've actually tested it throughout the state. We had specific workers in each county that would, would, would run like a fake support order, a fake enforcement in the new system, and then have to go into the old system and actually do it. The, the old system is old.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Old. So we are, we are absolutely looking forward to this new technology, and we don't anticipate any interruptions in payments or services to the community once it's, once it's rolled out.
All right, good.
For child protective, a decent amount going on in child protective. The State's Department of Children and Youth, it's a, it's a new department that was created with the last budget bill. They've actually provided an opportunity for child protective agencies to further support a treatment foster home model. Because counties throughout Ohio have seen an increase in what we call higher acuity children, children that have higher need. And those needs can be met in a home, if only those homes are properly supported, but also properly educated about how are you dealing with these children with higher needs, so that we don't have to put them in an institution or in a group home. So the state of Ohio has acknowledged that and is offering partnering opportunities with different counties to not only recruit, but support those treatment foster homes. So Medina's going to be partnering with Columbiana and Portage. So the three of us are going to work towards recruitment efforts. There were, I can see the look on your face. There were regions within...
I was just trying to picture.
Yeah. There are regions, because we're surrounded by metro counties. All of those metro counties went solo. There was, and it would be a disservice to Medina County if we did partner with them, because they are just so big. Portage County has a really great relationship with the Ohio Rice Partners and their Mental Health Board, and so do we. So, so Portage and I were kind of like winking at each other, like we should definitely partner. Columbiana, we had reached out to that director, and she didn't have those opportunities. So we thought, we can take the strengths of both Medina and Portage and cooperate with Columbiana. The idea is to have a shared foster care network for those higher-level children, that I can pick up the phone and call Columbiana and say, I have a child who has this, this, and this. Do you have a network in your, in your county? The, the funding that's coming from the state of Ohio will go to each county, but Portage is going to be the lead agency. So they're going to be the ones that, the idea is that these three counties will have the shared network of treatment foster home providers, but have one worker who is dedicated to all of those homes. That worker will be twenty-four seven on-call, provide support services as well as counseling services and crisis response. And it might not be that person that provides the crisis response, but Bill be the service coordinator for, to make that happen for those families. Portage will have that person on their staff. Columbiana, Medina, and Portage will all do the recruitment efforts, but monies that will be set aside, not towards staffing, will go to, go towards services and supports for those foster homes. They'll probably receive a higher per diem rate, so that they're providing and given further supports to help with those higher acuity children. It's a pilot, so I, I, I don't know what I don't know. There's another Teams meeting tomorrow. It's going to be about three hours long to help us continue these efforts. There's counties in northwest Ohio that have already implemented this and have seen great success with it. They've actually reduced their care costs because they're placing children in homes rather than institutions that generally cost more. And the reunification efforts or the permanency efforts are heightened, too, because we're, we're putting the needs in the services where those children need it most.
Okay.
And then the next thing that's happening in the child protective land is that we're applying for a different grant through Wendy's Wonderful Kids. It's part of the Dave Thomas Foundation, the, the guy who has the great hamburgers through Wendy's Restaurants. His daughter is adopted, so she has this Wendy's Wonderful Kids program. And we currently work and, and recruit children that are eligible for adoption through her program, but what they're offering now is a grant to support the salary efforts for an in-house worker, and we won't add staff, we'll just move a staff person over, and that person's entire dedication will be towards helping to recruit and adopt children that are between the ages of nine and seventeen. Those children are typically harder to have adopted. A lot of times, they come in with some higher acuity needs, but the idea is, is that we, we have a worker who does some of that, but she can only do some of it sometime, because we have other things that she's required to do. So what we're doing is allowing that salary to fully support her, so that we can have our other ongoing staff work on those needs. And then she can, she can work on just those efforts for those children that need adopted. We currently have about twenty children that are even in permanent custody or a permanent like type of custody, where parental relationship hasn't been severed, but they're not allowed to return home. So those children, we don't want them to linger in care any longer. It's time to find you a permanent place to live and a family of your own. So that is a grant that we're still working on the details, but our hope is that we get approved for it, so that we can work on these children, and they don't linger in our care. That's all I have.
Good.
That's a good report.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Okay, Commissioner's Resolution. We do have a resolution approving the petition for the regular annexation of eighteen point nine seven eight zero acres of land known as being part of Brunswick Hills Township to the City of Brunswick, Medina County, Ohio. We had a hearing regarding this last week, went through all the provisions and, and the, I won't read through the entire lengthy resolution, but concludes that the Board of Commissioners found that it does meet all the conditions of the Ohio Vice Code, and the petition to annex eighteen point nine seven eight zero acres of land from Brunswick Hills to the City of Brunswick is hereby approved and granted in accordance with the law.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move in discussion, any, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Second resolution is approving the appointment of representatives to serve on the One Ohio Region Nineteen Governance Board and the Region Nineteen Grant Review Committee. There's been some changes regarding the One Ohio Foundation, its governance board at the regional level, as well as the scoring process for applications for regional funding. Some significant changes in regards to conflict of interest policy, as well as the process, rather, I'll just say rather complicated, complex. The prior appointees, had been myself and Commissioner Harrison, that actually would have been a disadvantage to Medina County to have both commissioners on that. And given that, we would be appointing myself and Philip Titterington as an alternate for both the governance board at the Region Nineteen, as well as the Grant Review Committee or Scoring Committee for, for that purpose. Move to approve.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion?
Just to echo what you said. I mean, it's more a matter of the conflicts that would apply to one of us would most likely apply to both of us. And so having another voice there, and I'm, I'm very confident Philip's going to represent the county well in the role that he'll have to perform as the alternate, so.
Yeah, I think this increases the opportunities for the applications. And frankly, right now, all the grant applications are already in. I think we have about a hundred and seventy-one for the region, but they won't release the list to us board members until after we pass a resolution appointing the members that gets approved. We have to then go through a application, and likewise, we have to go through a one-hour training session with the Ohio Ethics Commission, before they will even tell us who the applicants are. So like I said, it's rather complicated. This is the first time and first round for the Ohio, One Ohio Foundation. It's a, a lot of their reactions are based upon lawsuits that they had faced that went all the way, I think, up to the Supreme Court, in which case, I guess, a lot of caution, but we just want to optimize the chances for applicants from Medina County, having access to those, those funds and being fairly and adequately reviewed in competition for those funds. So there's three point four million dollars, at least in current funding, for the Region Nineteen grants. So, all right, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
All right. Now we open up to a public comment. Please limit to five minutes. If you put your name, and please try to address areas where, regarding county business, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, we'll see. Mark Frederick, sixty-one forty-six West Smith Road, Medina, Ohio, United States of America, continent Earth America, planet Earth, Milky Way Solar System. I don't have to hide. In my continuing effort to ferret out stupidity and waste in our county and local government, I find that we have some dirty laundry. Last week, you probably saw it, and you know what? It's still there. Lafayette's dirty laundry. It's a shame that they had four hundred thousand dollars, and they kind of voted to put it in the wrong place. Colleen, last week, you said you had an issue with me calling a couple of the trustees stupid.
I do.
You know, well, that's, that's fine. You know what? I was right. If you have an opportunity to make some money, three percent at Huntington, as I understand it, and zero percent over at Westfield, that's twelve thousand dollars that the township is passing up. Anybody that passes up twelve grand, you're stupid. I'll stick with that. And furthermore, you know the old teacher does his homework. I do a lot more homework than you people know. In fact, in digging around, kind of discovered a couple of things. There was a bid depository contract, as I understand it, and this was probably done about five years ago. So I was right, there was no current bidding, but there were three places for financial placement. It's admirable that you jumped in to defend your fellow politicians, however, it's kind of foolish, I think. And also finding out that there was no bidding this time around. I was right. Placing that four hundred thousand at zero interest was stupid. I'll also like to mention that getting into a pissing match with a skunk is not a smart thing. Chris Jacobs, you and I in this very room some years ago, had a little match about painting some of the county buildings. Recall at the engineer's office and how far from track they were? I think I, I was a pretty good teacher. I teach a lesson. Well, anyhow, the buildings are painted. We haven't had to go back there. I used to tell my students, you know, you can just sit there and appear stupid, or you could open your mouth and prove it. And I think that's pretty good news to follow, you know? I've been giving away free, good education for about fifty years. Colleen, no charge for that. Further, I'd like to point out, it's kind of neat. A lot of these public record requests have foot dragging, it seems. Whether that's a futile attempt to delay or conceal the actual truth, I don't know, but I'm hearing that these are winding up in the prosecutor, whether they have to be approved, or what could be said. I don't know. It doesn't take Einstein to figure out what a public record is. At least, I didn't think so. Well, whatever, that's that. And one last thing, I was wondering if we made any movement on the equity on the sewer bills? That gentleman was here from Brunswick last week, for Brunswick Hills, talking about his water bill. Has anything been done with that?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Regarding, regarding that, I believe is still under study. We, actually, we had obviously holiday yesterday. We are, we will be reviewing the information. I know I've done a little review myself of other systems that are out there, what their minimum billing is, and what their, their practices are. I get to hear anybody that I've challenged, please show me a system that doesn't have a minimum bill. I'd be very, very happy to examine how they pay for those bills, how they pay to operate, operate equitably. So we're still reviewing it, and obviously, we'll be, that's part of our agenda in the future.
All right. Anything else? Any other public comment? All right, regarding, discussion session. We're going to have a brief discussion. Jeremy's going to have the opportunity. He's got a couple of issues to talk with us. We are going to...
My phone talked. I mean, my watch talked. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Well, a brief discussion on that, then we're going to go ahead and recess. We do have a request for executive session. I believe the members from outside that are here will be meeting, but therefore, and will go into executive session. And then after that accession, return and complete the discussion session. So Jeremy, you want to come forward? I just don't want to hold them here for a long period of time.
Morning, everyone. Been a while since here for a discussion. A couple of items of topic to discuss here. First is the septic. So as, as part of our, but our Liverpool Treatment Plan, we accept septic from, septic tanks from residential throughout the county. I got some copies of this, I'm passing it down. Kind of just want to give you a brief history of this. We established a, a septic program back in, I believe, two thousand, when the expansion of the plan happened. Originally, it was for in, in-county septic tanks only. And so let's fast forward. I don't know if on the first page here, you can, we have the, the graph. This talks about, shows how much septic we've been receiving in millions of gallons over the, over the years. You can see in twenty-twelve that there is a, we start to spike as receiving the amount of septic. Couple factors were there. At that point is when the county decided to accept out-of-county septic. French Creek, which was up in Lorain County, started to no longer take septic there. So the haulers had to bring it to another location. At that time, I believe the county agreed to take septic. At that time, they split the rates to an in-county and out-of-county rate. And then you can see around twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, there's a large drop-off. That's when we increased our rates for the, for the septic.
For everybody.
Yep, for everyone. And then you can see down in twenty eighteen, nineteen, every other, the septic started coming back up. That's because we haven't touched this rate since two thousand and sixteen. So that's kind of the, the brief history here. So met with Commissioner Hambley here and Mr. Jacob over there. And on the second page here, there's a, a little cell sheet. And if you just look at twenty-three, we received four point three million gallons of, of in-county septic, and that was from one thousand seven hundred and thirteen trucks. Received just under a quarter million of septic from out-of-county at a hundred and thirty-three trucks. One of the difficulties of having an in, an in-county and out-of-county rate, we have to go through and check every one of those tickets to verify if the property is in the county and what rate to choose. So that's been kind of a...
Why do you think there was such a significant jump in trucks between twenty-two and twenty-three?
Or, or... The loads. In the county. I would imagine some of the, the neighboring communities that accepted the septic either no longer took it, or their rates went up high enough that it was cheaper for them to bring it.
Just that to that.
I think one of the, one of the conditions here, and that's why it started early on, too, we look, over the years, when we've done water quality studies regionally and within Ohio, the failure of, of home septic systems. And the EPA, as well as health departments, have started to increasingly enforce those, which require more frequent cleanings. We'll just say that those that have home septic systems, historically, don't clean them out as much as they should. And there's been increased enforcement that has actually helped bolster that in many of the areas. And that, one of the reasons, early on, a couple decades ago, we said, all right, we'll take, and I think at one point in time, EPA, I thought, tied it to the funding that required you to take home septic. But apparently, maybe that was just more of a, a verbal agreement that we would. As, as part of the reason just makes sense to encourage people that have home septic systems, to get them cleaned out regularly, thereby reducing the, obviously, the pollution in, in our streams. And so, but I think whenever you have increased enforcement and then changes, you have reductions in some of the plants that are taking it, and changes of costs, these septic haulers, septic haulers will shop the best place to take them.
And I think, Colleen, that's why, why you saw that large, is because, you know, our rates became so cheap.
It was just the one year. Twenty-two to twenty-three went.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
So...
Do other, do other counties, they, are they more regular in their adjustments on the fees?
I, I think some of them are. I mean, between the adjustments and then all, they're on the third page, I believe it is. There's, we have a list. There was five treatment plants that have, that just no longer take it.
Right.
Because it's, you know, it's a really concentrated waste, and it's just more...
It's a cost.
Yeah. And depending on the size of the plant, the bigger the plant, the easier to treat.
Maybe we should like look at rate adjustments, like every three years or so, to have a more gradual kind of...
Well, I think, well, go, go ahead, and I think we have a proposal here to adjust.
On the very last page, okay, on the last page, we were able to kind of, as the, as the septic is put in at the, at the very beginning of the plan, it has to go through the entire treatment process in order for us to treat it. So in looking at the cost, the total flows, the total cost for, and this does not include any loans that we have for improvements, like our digester project. Essentially, it cost us about fourteen cents to treat this septic waste. And we're at, you know, currently at five cents for in-county and ten cents for out-of-county. So as of right now, we are operating at about a four hundred thousand dollar deficit, just, you know, because of these costs. So the recommendation here would be to increase, go to one rate, so we don't have to go through all these tickets, because the, the cost to treat doesn't change between in-county or out-of-county. But go to, do a two-step increase. Do one in July first of this year at five cents to get it to ten, and then to do another five cent increase in January first to get it to fifteen cents. And that should get us, that should, that, and that's just to cover our cost for treatment. That's not to make a profit. That's, it's just, that's just our cost. And then we could evaluate that on an annual basis, just to make sure that we are in, in the ballpark.
And then you gave us a list of the septic haulers that would be affected.
There are fourteen different companies that bring twenty-four trucks. They have to permit each truck that they bring. So I would get notification out of, you know, pending your, your approval here. I'll get notification out to those fourteen companies now, and just to let them know of the, of the plan to move forward.
I think the rate is very sensible.
All right. Makes sense?
Yep.
All right, cool.
Perfect.
Admiring some of the names of the septic haulers on the list.
They're, they are clever. All right. And the second thing I had to, would like to discuss with you is the Westfield Water Treatment Plant, which is located on Greenwich Road, just west of Westfield Road. The initial plan, when we purchased this back in, I think, late two thousands, was to, we, we built the plant at a half a million gallon process, and it was designed so you could mirror the plant and with the eventual goal of trading a million gallons a day. That million gallons a day with them would, we would push that water source north against the Ohio River, I'm sorry, between the Ohio River Basin and the Lake Erie River Basin line, because we can only bring so much water from Lake Erie south. So the goal is to push back up against that to minimize the amount of water we're bringing from Lake Erie. There's about, there's a, this is kind of a three-phase project. Our first phase is, is developing wells to handle the one million gallons, which we are in the process of design right now for. The second phase is to then upgrade the plant to be able to handle that million gallons. And then the third would be to build some sort of elevated storage tank farther north. That way, we can fill and then feed the proper pressure of that water. So as part of this, we had a consultant come in HDR. They did a whole assessment on the plan for us, and we basically found, they gave us three viable options here. The first one is basically just add additional equipment to our current setup to hit the million gallons. While that might be the easiest, there's some programming issues with the equipment, as it's a proprietary system. Therefore, we have to bring a vendor in to come in and make any type of changes that we want to the programming to, you know, turn this pump on when X happens, or, you know, when demand hits this, both of the, we don't have that option. The other option, and then also, there, there's going to need to be a small building addition, just to, to, to make the space for the additional equipment. Keeping in mind also, this equipment is already pushing twenty to twenty-five years old now. So the other option is to keep the same treatment process, advertise out competitively for newer equipment. May not, it may or may be a different manufacturer, but then we can set it up properly. We can get all of our programming correct and take care of a lot of isolation issues where we don't currently have, where we can't, you know, take a system offline without taking the plant down, you know, stuff like that. The third, the third alternative was a different technology. The only problem is, is it's not really used in the state of Ohio, and we would be almost like a pilot program for the state. So we kind of decided against that particular option. So, you know, looking at this, we're looking at close to probably a seven and a half million dollar upgrade, whether, for the, just to upgrade the existing equipment, and you're probably looking closer to maybe eight million if we redo the plant from scratch essentially to, to meet that million gallon demand. Our recommendation would be to go to the eight million. We have, this way, we have all-new equipment. We don't have some equipment that's twenty, twenty-five years old versus some equipment that's new. So our recommendation would, would be to go with, to go that route. I'd like to move forward with at least advertising out for design services to, to get assistance from a consultant to help us design that, as long as, you know, we have approval to move forward.
And basically, would utilize the new well, or, or future well, or new well?
Correct.
Sources.
Yep.
And basically, not only in terms of, well, the quality issues, but the capacity issues in the future?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
For, for the long term, the eight million makes more sense.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine.
Perfect. Well, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
All right. We'll go ahead and... Well, thank you.
Alright, thanks a lot.
Alright. We'll go ahead and...
Can I throw one thing out?
Yeah, sure. Alright. Because we're not coming back on camera.
Oh, we are? Okay, then never mind.
Okay, alright. Good. I, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session then?
So moved.
For the purpose of...
I'll let you...
To discuss pending litigation.
Second.
Moving to second. Roll call please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And then we'll, we'll come back after that, and then the discussion session will be back on camera. Thank you.
We're back from executive session, nothing to announce from that, but go ahead and reconvene. We now have our discussion session, and Stephen, you've got something for us?
I have.
All right. Or Chris, who's taking the lead on this one?
Both, if that's okay.
All right, sure.
You need more space.
Got to get more props than Mark Frederick. No underwear here, right?
I thought maybe that's why they were avoiding the podium.
No, let's be done.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you.
So briefly, hopefully, I wanted to update you on some of the projects that we've been discussing over the last several months and bring some updated information to you. We can start with, which one would you like to start with?
Whatever you want. You start talking, I'll just fill in.
We can start with parking, if that's acceptable.
Sure.
We had met with, following our previous discussion, we had met with Dan Becker at the County Engineers Office and talked about reducing the scope initially based on the current budgeted amount of 250 for just the portion of the parking lot that exits out to Liberty. So Dan had subsequently prepared an updated estimate for just that section. And then that section is this first page of these drawings, so just keep the whole things.
Oh, keep the whole thing. They go together. So this would be like a phase one kind of thing?
Yeah, that would be, as we discussed last time, based on affordability, that would be phase one. So that's the section that we're discussing, that's the section that pertains to that updated estimate that you have in front of you. And then just as additional information, there was a question about angled parking versus straight-in parking. The last page of that handout shows the calculation of number of spaces if we did angled parking in that section that's not phase one but phase two. And you would see the total potential parking spaces is reduced from 163 current to approximately 145, 149, or 150 depending on mostly what you did, I think with the handicap parking spaces.
And we hadn't seen the handicap illustrated along the building like that.
They've also made that slight change for consideration too, and if you want to...
I like it along the building, too.
Yeah, I think that's a lot better place for it.
If we're going to get rid of the islands, that enables us to do that.
That is correct. I think there's a couple issues, a lot of issues with some of that, is just that's a lot of parking right in front of the building, and I think that it pulls away from the actual looking at it as a main entrance, so we'll have to adjust those parking spots accordingly. But I think overall, I like the idea as well.
And it adds spots.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, 60, yeah, 163.
So that's illustrated on this page.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Yeah, yeah.
So this is...
Because that still gets them to get through for their trash haulers and the emptying the trash receptacle?
Yeah, I think in this, in this version that you guys are seeing now, I think the drive line would be all the way around the parking lot, pick up the trash, and then just drive right back out.
And it's two-way for every corridor, too.
Yeah, that's correct.
So I, no, I kind of like that.
And there was some discussion about overflow parking on that north boundary, that this would not be an option with this, which I think is actually a good thing. So there wouldn't be any room for any parking in a spot, all the parking would be marked.
That is correct.
Meant along the line, the side by Broadway, or Friendship, rather.
Friendship, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's fine.
So the Engineers' Office, and thank, to thank you to Dan and his staff, Andy's staff, are ready for us to proceed with phase one. We had talked about including in the bid specs for phase one, an alternate for the other portions, to see what the pricing looked like to at least assist us with future budgeting. So if you'd still like us to pursue that, we can do that.
I think, yeah, yeah, I think that's the way to go. Because then we're only, I mean, we get a bid that's in line on this one, we can do that at a minimum, but if...
And you never know when you're going to catch a company that needs a project or to fill in slots and...
Well, I think our timing might be better if we can get a jumpstart at the beginning of next year to get out there to bids, which seems to be the Engineers' opinion.
Great.
So we would present possibly with your approval a resolution next Tuesday for authorization to proceed with the bid process for that first phase, which again is just that section in concrete, correct?
Is this one you like, Stephen?
Yeah, again, I like, I, they just did this redesign, and I really like that the parking came up against the building. I'm not sure what that looks like from a parking surface. I know the first portion is all concrete, we're going to leave it concrete, I'm not sure what that next phase would look like. So phase two is still up in air of whether it would be concrete.
But I guess for clarity for anybody who's watching this, we're not, actually, we're increasing the number of handicap spots, are we not?
That is correct.
And they're actually, you're moving from the one side of the building to the other longer side of the building, and that greater access.
Closer to the entry door.
Rather than, on the previous ones, when we look, we were actually moving them further away from the building.
I think it also gets them out of that main thoroughfare of the incoming traffic.
Correct.
While I understand it's still a main drive line for the building, it's not the main drive line coming in and/or leaving.
Well, less of an opportunity for conflict between people driving and people with disabilities trying to cross traffic. So this, I think, is safer, that makes more sense, greater access, I do like this redesign very much. And it gives us 163 spaces, which is...
And to the question about surface, so if we did the A/B bid, the B bid would be to do the balance of it in concrete, or would we do an alternative, concrete or asphalt?
I think we need to sit back down with Dan this week and kind of walk through that and figure out how to proceed, but we can update with you on that next Tuesday as we present the resolution.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we can get it advertised next week also, so at least get this part done before the year is up.
That'd be great.
So, and within the budgeted amount that you set aside for this.
Did, at what point do we have to have the conversation about the lighting plan?
Well, going to the...
That would not happen until all the second phase.
That'd be next, that'd be, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just want to make sure we're proactive about not planning for something that isn't an option from the city's perspective.
Yeah, I think from this point right now that you're good, if you only move forward with the one section, but if we have to bring in phase two, then yeah, we'd have to have that discussion with the lighting.
Yep.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
All right. So that kind of segues into...
I like that better than what we looked at last night.
I really do. Good, good job.
We had previously procured the services of an architect to assist with the restroom project, and included in the scope of that, we included wayfinding for this building. I had sent the parking information that you received today, I had sent that to the architectural firm that's also working on the wayfinding, so that there's some kind of synchronization of the two, because I think that's what needs to happen. And they did provide this preliminary info last week, there's not a lot of meat there, but it gives some indication as to what they're looking at. They've also, for your information, I've asked them to come to the meeting for discussion next Tuesday, the firm, to talk about final proposal, bid specifications for the restroom project, to update you as a board on the wayfinding project, and to review the final finishes that they're proposing for the restroom. So if you get a chance, take a look at that, and if you have comment on any of that information that's contained in there, again, it's fairly generic.
Inconsistent graphics is an understatement, I would say.
They're consistently inconsistent.
Yeah.
I'd argue.
I think you did.
Uniformly inconsistent.
You did a great job. Yes. Abstract. Yes.
Variety is the spice of life.
Yeah.
See, we can all come up with a great point, though.
Well, and I think, I mean, we joke about that. To me, it isn't about aesthetics as much as it's about just making sure people are directed where they need to go for whatever purpose they're trying to accomplish here, and I think we can do that.
I mean, how many times when you walk down there, people are eating with all the signage, going, "How do I find, I need to go CAV, how do I find?" I know.
Once we get the lighting fixed, though, maybe it'll be a more pleasant place to spend some time in, but...
Oh, we'll get to that in a sec.
It's wandering in the dark, combined with not knowing where you're going, it's a bad combination.
Get to that.
Indeed, so, all right.
Momentarily. So you'll notice, though, that some of that does tie into exterior wayfinding, and that's why I thought it was important.
And that, and that was your point, that was Steven's point, too, right? Was you're saying the original plan showed sidewalks kind of directing everybody to this entrance, entrance A. And I see the limitation of that with the new sidewalk markings, but I also think if we have signage that points to a main entrance, people who are here for the first time are going to find their way to that regardless.
Correct. I think your email had some really good questions about making sure what services are rendered at each of those locations, not necessarily just, hey, it's the Recorder's Office, Treasurer's Office.
Right.
But what do they do? What am I trying to get out of my visit here? Is valuable information put on signs?
Agreed. Okay.
Yeah, we'll see.
All right.
Segue to the restroom project. This is the current estimate. As you may recall, we had budgeted $750,000 for this project. The current estimate is about $567,000. There may be some update to that based on some of the comments that Steven has sent to the architect on their most recent set of drawings, and I think there's still the question as to whether that restroom up by the coral room is included as an alternate or included in the base bid. But again, they said they'd be happy to come in next Tuesday for a presentation on this. And if that's okay with you, I'd like to extend that invitation. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. We also have an update on some pricing for stairwell and flooring modifications here. This is, pass that out for you. We have, based on some preliminary discussions we've had with you folks, we think that perhaps you want to only head towards the LBT flooring option in the corridors. That cost, based on, I think, the product lines that you're looking at, and again, if you have that handy, sweetie...
Yeah, I do. So I'll put it in front here. And I showed this to you before, this is the carpet selection. I think the carpet was okay. I will go ahead and put that away. That's pointless.
Sorry, yes.
And then these are three different styles of floors. They're all LBT, they all come in three- and five-millimeter flooring systems.
And they're all at that price that was circled.
The three-millimeter ones, huh?
Right, right, which...
Oh, you can get these in either, you're saying?
You can get these in either. Yeah, these are both three and five millimeters.
And we think the noise, the threes...
This is the one you originally...
Yeah.
I think the recommendation here is to proceed with three.
Yeah.
And the reason being, we'll go with a three?
The reason for three would be that the contractor was worried of five-millimeter with it being so thick that it gets too close to some of our doors, so we had to trim the bottom sides of our doors, and we didn't have to deal with that. The three and the five have the same exact wear layers, so it wouldn't hurt our durability factor. The only difference between the two is that the, normally five-millimeter is used for a less level surface. He's not too worried about that in this building. We all know that this floor has some movement and flex to it, or inconsistency, that they're not too worried about that. So from, the flooring expert said that we should be fine with three-millimeters, I'm trusting his expert advice.
And we're not, there's no sound issues with either, with those that'll be any, you know, sometimes you hear, obviously, we already hear some creaking and all that sort of thing, but...
We will not be solving any creaking issues with this floor.
But we're not making it worse.
Correct.
Yeah, that's...
That creaking is going to remain no matter what surfaces we put on these floors.
You guys are okay with that one that I liked?
Yeah, do you want to open that one up? He had it on the camera, and it was, yeah, I like that one a lot. And that's the broader...
I like the variation, I like the variation for dirt and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine. I, when it comes to that kind of stuff, I defer to my spouse at home, so I'm glad.
I'll make that recommendation up there.
So that would be the...
I didn't get elected on the basis of picking four. Okay.
I don't think Colleen did either.
I'm good with the experts.
I didn't either, but I'll take it.
I'm good with the experts. The question comes down to is, is obviously, they'll know a bit more once that carpet comes up, what the floor actually looks like, right?
Yes.
So we're going to go ahead with that?
That is correct.
Okay.
They will still be putting a floor level down.
That would be our current recommendation.
Oh, they will put a floor level, okay.
Can I, can I go back to this one and ask a question?
Which one?
Restroom?
Okay, so I guess I'm confused, and I just want you to double-check that it's included. Flooring has zero, so are they including the floors in the ceramic?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, just want to double-check on that, because I think it was odd that flooring says...
Yeah, I'd actually made a comment about flooring in general, because I think that there was a couple tiles that they call out for in the drawings that weren't clear to me, so they said it was all incorporated, and they're going to refine their drawings accordingly.
Okay.
Got it.
Because it is significantly less than we thought, so I thought maybe it's, something was missing, but I just want to make sure that it's in there.
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Colleen being high maintenance, wanting floors in the bathrooms.
Yeah. But it was what I was looking at.
Okay, all right. Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's perfectly fine. We also received a quote to replace the ceilings in the corridors, and Steven's folks are going to do the lighting purchase of the supplies for the lighting and do the installation of the lighting. So the total for those two, the ceiling and the lighting, is currently quoted at $54,000. We had budgeted $65,000, just so you're aware, so it's, it came in under budget. Stairwells and flooring, you have that, that's $60,000 for the stairwells, which is included in that one handout that I provided you with the flooring on there also. That would be not the same flooring as the corridor, but more of a treaded type of, hopefully better-looking than what we have currently. But that'd be for the three stairwells, the rear and the two side entrances.
And it's more of a non-slip kind of thing?
It is.
For the stairwells, yeah.
It's very, it's not, what you have now is a rubber-based flooring. It'll still be that, it will just no longer have the little dots that are a maintenance nightmare. So they do, they still create something that's very similar, and it'll be high-quality, long durability, and it'll last quite a while. We will be putting in, right now, the quote is, looking at putting in high-wear or high-traffic carpet A. The entrances to the stairwells, which is not the lower floor, but the half-level, and then the front entrance, entrance A and entrance B will both have walk-off carpets. That entrance A will have the entire vestibule, and then another eight feet, and then the other one will be just as much as we possibly can do, which is about 10 feet worth of walk-off carpet. So hopefully, we can get rid of rugs, trip hazards, and things like that, and still have that same...
Okay.
And that will lead to the, to the new flooring after that stretch?
That is correct, and then that'll transition right into the new LBT or LVP, whatever.
So is, did I miss something? Are the other projects, the cost of which we, I had them as four separately, I mean, another 200-ish?
We have 11,000 potential savings to ceiling lighting, we have approximately 180,000 potentially on the restroom side, approximately 41,000 savings on the stairwell flooring side.
Yeah, so we, so, I mean, because I'm thinking that numbers are almost going to be where we were, what we thought we were going to spend on bathrooms. So we're, we're definitely ahead of the game on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Which then if we got maybe a really good surprise quote for your concrete, the whole project?
Oh, yeah, true, with the alternates, yeah. So we could, you know, that money will remain there until further obligated, so, you know, we've got that separately budgeted and appropriated, so...
All right. I think, I mean, we talked about it at budget time, too, that this building's been in desperate need of the updates.
We were one of the last. We made sure other, other county functions and, yeah.
Yeah, and with anything like this, with public money, it's not, nothing opulent, but it's just necessary. It's going to look nice, but should look nice, but it's not going to be, yeah, we skipped out on the marble floors.
Life span does have, there is an end to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, we're good. All right.
No, this is great.
Couple of comments, and then we're going to, I'm going to come back to Steven in a second. EMA stormwater. I know that the EMA board, Matt, discussed the stormwater change order. I brought copies of that for you. Just a reminder, due to the increased scope or the required stormwater work, the potential change for that on the third, fourth page of that document is additional $17,352. I had mentioned that the EMA board was, at least some members were kind of concerned. We had, EMA had fully obligated their state grant allocation, capital grant, and also the other miscellaneous revenue sources that they obtained to contribute toward this project. So this was outside of that budgeted amount. We had authorized verbally and in email the contractor to proceed with it in order to not delay the project. So then there's the obligation of this 17,000 plus and the various cost centers that may be available for payment of this cost. So I've got a construction meeting out there at 2:00 today. I was wondering if there was some resolution to that.
Well, the EMA board, I guess they voted to split the costs with the, and asking the commissioners to do the balance. I think that there's good reason. It involves the drainage benefits to the adjoining private property owners as well as the public road, which as I understand is unusual, but it's the county. Apparently, it assumed the obligation for Heatherhead many years ago. So at this point, seems relative to the benefit of making sure that that roadway does not get flooded, that the county would be willing to split that cost. You agree?
I agree, yep.
So you are fine with me finding the available revenue on our end to pay for the 50% share?
Yep.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. County Home, final construction-related topic. County Home had made a presentation, Greg Brown, our superintendent out there, had made a presentation during the block grant application meeting last week, and, was it last week? Yeah. And had requested through the block grant allocation about 124,000 for window replacement. I believe there were, Matt, you can correct me, about 181 windows that were included in that cost. You had made some other funding decisions that didn't allow for this to be paid out of the block grant. As a project, you had recommended that perhaps we take a look at using ARPA funds. Matt and I went out, Matt and Greg on site there. We're still looking at trying to reconcile some of the numbers that have been provided, but, and I think the suggestion was to look at ARPA balances in the ARPA fund to pay possibly for those windows. Since that discussion, we had, have received 111,000, little over 111,000 in refund amount from the Secretary of State's office to offset the ARPA expense that you made for those electronic poll books. So that money, two weeks ago, was not available to us, and so we've paid that back into the ARPA fund. We'll show the credit of that on our federal quarterly report, and then we can subsequently reallocate that if you wish. That's, that was on the traditional ARPA side. I believe we can, and again, I'll check with legal counsel, I believe we can also pay for this improvement out of the traditional ARPA side.
Comes based for the whole thing?
Yes.
I'm in, I'm in.
I agree.
Okay. He's got some additional, I think there are six dormers, is that right? Three on each side. And those are not included here.
Do those open, are those open to the attic? Are they, they're not decorative?
I think they are operable windows, so...
Is this like a sec quote, or will he have, he'll have to go off for bed, correct?
Yeah, we've got, we're trying to identify some state purchasing contracts that may allow us to proceed more efficiently and quickly through that, but otherwise, it'll be a bid process.
In the hopes that it's totally covered by the credit, you know, the 111,000, yeah.
The vast, vast majority will be, aside from the dormers, so if you want us to continue to move forward with that, we'll get back to you with some final numbers if you can.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And that's pretty much all on the construction side. Steven, I also wanted him to stick around all morning, unfortunately for you, sorry, for just an update on a budgetary item. As you know, the board approved an additional amount in the maintenance budget based on Steven's request for possible promotion of some of his workers from tech one to a tech two, technician one to technician two position. There was going to be some work on Steven's end after the budget was adopted. You did approve a half-year funding for up to three promotions from a budgetary perspective, but with the understanding that Steven will come back and make a presentation as to what his mechanism was going to be to assess that. And so I wanted to pass this out to you, so you have that information. And...
Is there one for Rhonda's pile?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And Steven, if you want to come back up.
Okay, so what you have in front of you is the assessment matrix that we have put together for the team. The overall goal would be, the overall rating would be 80% for a technician to become a maintenance worker, too, by contract. There had to be some sort of a matrix in there that we provided them. This goes through all of the different functionalities that we do. I've broke it down into safety, general, electric, HVAC, plumbing, carpentry, masonry, and then correctional doors. That's basically dealing with the locks. What would happen is that after each of these tasks were evaluated, that evaluation will be with the employee, a peer of the talented group that we have, would provide an individual that would attest to the person's ability, and then the supervisor would sit with them. As soon as that is decided, the percentages in the spreadsheet automatically start addressing. So as each one of these things are signed off, the percentages start to adjust accordingly. And once that person hits an overall rating of 80%, they would then be qualified as a level-two technician.
Do you want to ask a question?
Absolutely.
This overall, is this an average of these scores or an addition of these scores?
The overall is the overall piece of all training matrix, so all of the different...
Have to be 80%.
Have to be 80%. So my...
So they can't get like 100 in general and get themselves, you know what I mean?
They could. There's no possible way that somebody could have 100% in general and have nothing across the board, that it would not qualify that. This is a cumulative total of everything. But you could be, you could be an expert in HVAC and not in carpentry and still possibly have the ability to make 80%.
If you're depending your percentages in the other categories.
Depending on your percentages.
They're not, are they, but they are weighted equally.
They are weighted equally.
That was kind of like my question as far as...
Every single item throughout this entire sheet is just one.
Because that was kind of the key we talked about, was making sure it's people who are well-rounded. Obviously, have, you want to hire for certain talents, but they need to be cross-trained to take that next step.
That is correct.
To be a supervisor.
This also allows us to give an assessment to every technician that walks in our door, so we can initial... so we can initially give this to them and understand where our strengths and weaknesses are as a department, as a person, and start pushing training towards those weaknesses that we continue to get better and continue to provide the training on the, on regular training, right?
Or if someone walked in your door in an area that you were weak, where they were an expert, they would look like such a great hire to fill out your team.
That is correct, right. It allows us, and it also gives us that seasoned expert then to also train those other folks that are not trained.
It's such a great rubric. I wish that we had more departments that it could be more specific like this and identifying needs.
Where did you, where, where did you come up with individual elements for each category?
Ah, a lot of time and effort, just sitting in, in groups of, of, we, for the safety, we talked to Dawn, our group. For HVAC, we have an outside contractor that we use quite a bit. For the correctional doors, we used our in-house, Don, one of our technicians, fantastic there. Kind of gave us those ideas. We have a carpenter in-house. So, what we did is we built this, something similar to this, and gave it to the technicians and allowed them to evaluate, and then they gave us back information. And we've kind of provided that over and over and over again, and then this is what the end result was.
I think this is fantastic.
Are any of the subcategories weighted within a category, or are those all equal as well?
They're all equal. Everything's equal as of right now. I was hesitant on putting anything of more value than anything else. I didn't want somebody to have.
You can kind of game the system at that point.
That's correct, and, and so, we've negated that just by having it. I, I call it one for one, but it's really not. It's the percentage-based, it's, it's.
Okay, all right.
I think it's great.
Very good.
Well done.
Thank you. I don't know how you want to talk about moving everybody forward. I know we've only approved for three, but this allows everybody that opportunity to move forward, so.
Well, that does, that is an interesting question, because you, when you said about doing an initial assessment, if an employee comes in and they're already eighty percent, and they're a brand-new employee, are we hiring them at a tech two level if it's a tech one opening?
The contract allows for that, so the union contract does allow for it. I would hate to do that inside of their probationary period.
So, my, my.
Well, I don't think you should do it inside of their probationary period.
Yeah, my thought would be, the, I like having a more objective, and I'm sure your employees love having a more objective evaluation, but can we make us a seniority component to that, too? Or is it just when you're outside of probation, you're eighty percent, you're a tech two?
I think that.
Do we need to have years of service connected?
Service time in addition to?
We've talked parts of that, so there's been conversations on both sides of that, and I think there's pluses and minuses on both sides. So, we, you're talking about a plus is that we get to evaluate a person for a longer period of time. The minus to that is that if we have a truly qualified person that doesn't necessarily want to stay in their field of electrician or whatever that looks like, how does that pay look for them? Again, we just lost one of our carpenters to the Board of D.D. because of money. He's talented enough to be a level two, but we lost him because of an opportunity somewhere else.
How many years did he have?
Just over one, one and a half, I think. Maybe a two now. I'd have to verify, but it's, it's not a lot.
Yeah.
And I know that even the technicians have said something about a seniority base. My worry is, again, is that I think that you have a benefit of both, because you learn the buildings better if you've been here longer.
How would it affect morale to have new people jump ahead of people with more years in?
That's a great question. In, in my world, as long as we're, we have a standard.
Yeah.
Everybody knows that standard. It doesn't, I mean, if you, if you want to work towards it, then, then there's already been a standard, and this is what we've lacked from day one, is that we've never had a true ability to assess every individual equally from start to whether they're here for five years.
And I'm, and I'm okay with, I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that side of it. I just think in a world where the path to being tech two is, is obje, fully objective, then will you, will you get people who are tech ones? You know, will, will everybody apply saying, well, I'm going to come in as a tech two, and, you know, does that, does that, from a, from a cost standpoint, is that sustainable?
From a hiring standpoint, I think it makes sense for us, because then we get the best people, and we don't have to choose those tech twos when we hire somebody, but we get to hire off the personality, making sure that they are a true fit for our department. And as we continue to move forward, we have a better morale in our department, because we're hiring the right people, not necessarily somebody that's qualified. The most qualified person might not be the best fit for who you have.
We had briefly discussed during the budget process, too, whether we needed everyone to be a tech two, or.
Yeah.
And I, Stephen and I had a brief discussion about that again last week. I think we worked through that process. I, I, I don't know that he and I necessarily agree on that.
Yeah.
And that's fine. It's, it's good to discuss it.
Yeah.
But I think that's part of your point with the question was, do we promote, not just a budgetary standpoint, but from a workload standpoint?
Yeah.
Do we need everyone to be a tech two, or are there simply some tasks that really are a tech one, so?
And it, and just a little bit of a, of a concern, and it isn't, you're right, it isn't just a budgetary concern, but, you know, if everybody comes in at the same, at the same level, but if everybody comes in and achieves that, that level, do we have all the roles filled that you need, you know, for the, for the team? And I, I'm not, I'm not intimately enough involved. I'm just asking the question of if that, if you can do that with all tech twos.
Yeah, I, I think as we move through the rest of this year, I think we're going to have to come up with some kind of decision about that.
I think the right, I, I think where, what you're getting at, which I really like about this, by the way, is the right type of personality is somebody who aspires to be in the role long enough to get to that point of a tech. I wouldn't want somebody who's going to come in that says, I forever want to be a tech one. I, I think you're saying that's the right type of personality, is somebody who's got aspirations. Now, how do we check the box and prove that they're there? So, that I get completely.
Do you worry about having a situation where everybody's a tech two and assigning them a job and not wanting to do certain jobs because they're tech twos?
No, I worry the other side, where if we only have level ones, and I'm asking you to do level two work.
Yeah.
I think that's where my problem.
Okay.
Well, we currently have three level twos staff of the twelve.
Eleven.
Eleven. Sorry. So, there, I mean, it, it has been working operationally. I think what Stephen recognized through his budget request process and, and through the discussions we've had is that we probably need to provide these folks an opportunity to advance and in some objective assessment manner, that would allow that to happen fairly. And what that mix ends up being most optimal for the operation of his department, I think is something that I think we'll progress to take a look at, so, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and maybe it's, maybe what it is, is for a new hire, it's not just based on the matrix. It, it could be based on years of service, and you could give them service credits for years that have come in before. But once they're in and, and working in the system, if it's all based on this, you know, maybe it's that simple, because I, I could just see a scenario where you say, well, we think this person's a fit. We think they're going to check all the boxes, and we, we are pretty confident they get the eighty percent, but maybe we still want to bring them in as a tech one. I just want you to have that latitude.
I think that when we initially did the contract negotiations on the last union contract, that was discussed, right? So, how, how do we bring in somebody, and then if they don't do that work, how do we pull them back down? That was discussed at our last contract negotiations, and I think that there's, I don't think we have it in there currently, but I think there's some language that needs to be put in there to make them understand that, hey, you, you said you could do all this. We checked off that you could do all this, and I think that's where that, where you have to go through their probationary period and verify those tasks. But at some point in time, if they are not doing that, then we have to have, have that honest conversation that you have to go back to a maintenance level one worker and work your way back up to a maintenance level two worker, or you don't have a job, and I don't think there's an option there.
In this scenario, when you're in your discovery phase on their abilities, do you think it's prudent to extend your probationary period? So, you have opportunities to see their abilities?
I think if we're going to hire somebody as a level two, and no, I would not, you have two options at that point in time. We won't extend your probationary period, but you will become a maintenance level one worker, because we see enough potential in you to stay on board with us. My concern would be that you've oversold yourself in your interview process and.
That's my point, like, should you, do you need more time to assess?
Ah, no, because I would move them down to level one.
They're not level two, right?
Yeah, if they're not a level two, then, then no, you're not going to remain a level two. You're going to go back to a level one if you so choose, right?
And there's room in your contract to move down like that?
We only have, we only have eleven openings, period, but in the contract, I'll verify, and if not, there will be.
Okay, I just want you to have language that, to allow you to make decisions without a grievance kind of situation.
And I think that'll be addressed in the, as we start to discuss the contract negotiation process for next year, because again, that contract expires, you hand it a discount year, so.
Yeah, I, I think if we're taking this approach, we have, we have to be okay with the likelihood that eventually, because if we're doing this the right way and we're hiring the right people who are going to have longevity, that there are going to be, if there are eleven spots, they're all going to be potentially filled by level twos at some point. And I'm not sure I'm, I'm not sure I'm entirely comfortable with that. I'm just saying, I think that's how, we have to look at it from a cost standpoint, because the union contract is, is never going to give you the latitude once they're in the system to, to hold them back from this progression. And I do, I am in favor of that. I just, I think we've got to look at it as, at some point in time, that means we're going to have eleven level two techs. And, and hopefully, if that's the key to keeping people here for a long period of time, I, I think I can.
That was my point in the union contract, and maybe giving this Stephen the flexibility of a little longer probationary period to evaluate.
Yeah, again, I don't mind them being level one. I'll take all the time in the world. If you're a level one and we see the potential that, that you're truly working towards the level two, and then that just, and if somebody only wants to be a level one technician their entire life, then fine, they don't want to work towards any of these goals. That's on you. You're still going to do all the requirements, right? You're still going to do, but at the end of the day, you know, we ask for every one of our guys to be on call once a week, right? Every eleven weeks, these guys rotate through, and we expect them to go out to every call that, that we're at. So, it's very difficult to say, hey, I've only got a level one going out there.
Yeah.
That's true.
So, it's, it's always a difficult process to, to deal with. We do manage a lot of pieces after hours and.
Yep. Yeah, I think this is really good work, though. I think it's a step in the direction we need to head.
If you could have this kind of rubric in other areas.
It doesn't necessarily translate to all areas.
I know, I know, I know.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I understand the sentiment.
All right, you're good?
I think that's all I had. Thanks. I'm sorry we took up so much time.
No, it's all right.
It was all great. It was all great.
And we'll have the architects in next few days on the mission, so.
Perfect. Okay, super. All right, Matt, do you have anything? All right, good.
I just have one thing, and I'm just going to pass this out, and I don't know, since we're discussing so much next week, maybe we should put this off two weeks. I'll see what you guys think. But if you could evaluate these packets in the next week or so, and let us, let me know whether you want to discuss it next week or the week after, depending on the agenda. We had, met with the Fair Board, and so, this is a packet that Denise put together of three potential RFQs. So, that first page that you're opening up is a summary of the three potential RFQs that we could potentially go out for bid. So, I'd like you to look at them, and then whenever you're ready to have a discussion on which one you think's that, I know what I'm leaning towards, but I'd like to know your thoughts when you're ready, okay? So, if you're ready by next week, great. If, if, you know, this agenda's too big for next week, great. Denise did a really good job.
Good.
Good.
Good. Thanks for your, your work on this. All right, cool, great. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
I want to make note, we did approve the reduction of, well, we have approved our side of the lease for the Ohio Means Jobs space. And with that reduction, we've had some very, very preliminary conversations with the Law Library Resources Board representatives about moving the temporary space during construction for the Law Library into that seventy-two public square space. That's, that's considered, I think we call that the first floor of Public Square, seventy-two Public Square.
It's a lovely.
It, and to, to kind of further the, the plans for that, there've been some discussions within the Law Library Resources Board. I'm not sure if you, well, you were there when we talked to the librarian. So, she has suggested to Rebecca Clark, the, the chair of that committee, that they schedule time or set aside time on their, I think it's their June thirteenth meeting.
Eleven, twelve.
Okay, yep, yep. It's some, it's somewhere in the middle part of June when, when they have their next meeting to go over and check out that space. So, I'm going to try to make sure I'm available to be there when they do that, but as long as that, is that, is that open during working hours?
I have it on my calendar. I have let you know that I'd be happy to kind of introduce them to the space if they wanted to move their board up there after their.
Yeah, I think that's what they're planning on doing. Yep, yep.
I've got it on my calendar, the ten also, unless you.
No, I think, I think that's fine. I, I, but it's, the space right now is being used as a computer lab and some reception space is what I would call it for Ohio Means Jobs. And I think it lends itself well to the temporary solution that we were looking for. So, we want to get the Resources Board over there to take a look and, and, and move that process forward, so.
Here's my question on that issue. What if they really liked it? Would they be able to decide that sooner rather than later in order to inform the city of that in their plans?
Yeah, I don't, I, I think that, I, perhaps, but I don't think that.
Because it would have to be sooner.
I don't think, I don't think this is the type of space that anybody's going to say, this should be our home.
Okay.
Do you have a different opinion on that?
I think it's somewhat limiting in terms of their ability to maintain some of their research.
Right.
Books, et cetera, et cetera.
There's, there's going to be kind of a bare bones, they're working out which, which titles they need to bring over so they have access to them, and then the other ones are going to kind of be in deep storage during the construction process. I mean, that's, that's, those plans remain to be seen. They've got electronic versions of a lot of things that are over there that, that mitigate, I won't say eliminate, but depending on a matter of perspective, they.
Right, right, right now, the intent is, is a temporary move.
Yeah.
And they'll move back and, and much more permanent within the nineteen sixty-nine.
So, this gets them out during the sensitive, yeah, the sensitive construction phase, but also then while the reconstruction of their space is being done.
Right.
So, the thought is that, that they could be in this space for the entire duration of the construction.
Okay.
But they'll, yeah, so that's, that's where that stands, and I think, I don't think there's any thought that this could be replacement space for, so, there's just not.
It just looks off the square. It's very nice.
Yeah, square footage-wise, though, it's not really comparable to, you know, but it'll, it'll do the job for temporary, I think.
Right. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, probably see when we get the Solid Waste Policy Committee minutes. Policy Committee met last week. The intent is that we have, for number one issue, you may or may not be aware, we're going into starting the planning phase. We've got about two years to redo the plan, number of issues. The intent is to issue an RFQ sometime this summer. The committee will go over it. We'll be interviewing consultants to see what they can do in terms of helping us address that, selecting one, and then, and then we, I guess, right now, between the, the director and the policy committee and the consultant workout as to how that lays out in terms of finances. Barb will be doing some of the planning herself, some portions she can, but others will involve the committee and the community in coming up to decisions on some of those changes that might be potential. Another discussion was, that would add some general support, was the moving, the, as you may or may not know, when residents go and use a facility, they have to pay cash or check, and then basically implementing a credit card system and trying to best implement that as well as making sure that the costs for that are borne by the individuals using the credit card, but also in terms of the processes. And then the committee took some time to discuss that, but I think the direction overall is, as soon as possible, to move to that for, for the various customer base, to be able to utilize it and use a credit card. As many people that go through, you know, fast food, Taco Bell, things like that, they use a credit card, don't pay cash, and that seems to be what we need to do, is if we've built this place for customers, for customer convenience to be able to use, being able to charge on that basis, it makes a lot of sense. So, we'll be moving forward with that. Those are the two main items I have to report.
I have had preliminary discussions with our IT department about moving forward with that, so.
Okay.
They're aware that it's something that needs to happen.
Yeah, good, good. All right, and that's all I've got. So, anything else? Entertaining motion.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Move second roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Weddick?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes, all right, very good. Thanks.